Dr. Peter Johnson Woods? I would say yes, and Dr. Mr. Clay Johnson?
Yes.
All right, we're close at three zero emotions care. Uh, Learning Lab, actually, Gary ready, Gary ready, smash us. This is Crystal O'Brien.
Good evening, Gary Community School Corporation Board, Dr. Stokes, community. My name is Crystal O'Brien, and I serve as the information specialist with the Gary Community School Corporation. And today, we wanted to briefly highlight an amazing program we had here uh with in partnership with the Urban League and Northwest Learning Lab. For those of you all who are not familiar with the Northwest Learning Lab, it was an amazing program put together by a grant that was written by Deb Black, who's here in the audience, if she wants to wave. And it wasn't just any grant, this was a grant for one point two million dollars to be able to support our scholars. So give her another round of applause, the board of this team. So the Northwest Learning Lab actually started in Indianapolis. And so Deb Black was familiar with the layout of the program and what it did for the academics and the students down there in the summer. And so she wanted to bring that as a resource here. And doing so, they were able to partner with a number of enrichment partners, as they call them, uh that came onsite to help students, as well as the students had opportunities to go off of site, uh to expand on those academic learnings. For this particular program, we had some amazing results. The board has a special file that was um sent over to you all from the Learning Labs on those numbers. And the program that they used, they saw a significant increase in our ELA and in our math scores for the students. And they really um gave that to the the heart of the teachers. They had certified teachers for the summer, and they had very small groups. Uh they had twenty-one sites across Northwest Indiana. And for Gary Community School Corporation, we hosted one of the sites at Williams Elementary School. And so we're gonna show you a quick video that gives a little recap of the summer. It looks like it was just fun, but I promise they were learning some things as well, uh according to the test scores. And um they had, they had almost twenty percent increase just in the ELA score, and that was in five weeks. So we wanna give a round of applause to all the teachers, all the teachers and members that have supported this initiative. And so um the, again, the video is gonna give you the overview and a little snippet of a parent, a little snippet of our our kids. But hopefully, it inspires you so that you can then support the initiatives of the Urban League and Northwest Learning Lab if it's able to return to us next summer. Excuse me, is that multitasked?
They sent back to us, we're going to give you one point two million, but what? Uh I'd like you to know, you have been permitted from downstairs to upstairs in your office for the ability to bring this to my head, once a, one site, in five hours.
By working with the school myself, I would have come to come to site and saw some of my big prepare with me, Gary, Gary, and Brian, so we all know, I don't follow up everybody. But they asked one of our students that um struggled staying in the classroom, struggled with not even opening out of the school building, and he had to get a break out there. That was, I mean, it was quite a, you know, and that was a great thing.
All right, so we got Northwest, right, and I have, as we've been saying this year, we've got the chances of pushing the board meeting and meeting group for the latest.
Well, we're just seeing all we can, um we have more activities for them. Uh we have the question activities, where they learned, um they got more, they got to relate, great, I love the work, it is a great experience. Uh we did the dark, as cultural, Martin Pratt, we seen his case.
Well, and how those students, they felt loved, especially because I believe they were in small class setting, which makes a difference. And then, when they had the opportunity to go to some of those enrichment opportunities, or North Grand Rising, or the kayak, you know, whatever it was, that was something that many of them had never, ever experienced before.
Our Learning Lab set the tone for our whole camp. You're gonna come in, you're gonna learn, you're gonna gain, you work hard, then you play hard. And so there was a tone that was set, that is gonna be a citywide tone for now on, you know, as an academic that we need to make sure that we are assisting the teachers with bold and championship young minds, so that they can get this.
They just didn't even see the kids gaining, they didn't like their workouts, with their own thought processes, and seeing it work together as a plan, and it's gonna boost, um to foster solution, and then, I think that, or I think that, as soon as you work out, they have to come out of their shell.
What worked also was the curriculum. As an educator, it wasn't my favorite, but what I saw, what it was trying to do was create discipline.
Hi, I'm Cora Yannis, and she needs to go to Chase's day. And I had the pleasure of opportunity of sharing financial help with many of our students across the Gary community this summer, talking about budgeting, saving, how important it is to save. It's really important for us here at Chase to make sure that we're setting a foundation for our youth in our communities across the country, especially in our beautiful city of Gary.
But man, all we work, it's a lot of work, you know, here, here.
And we know it's good, and we're ready. It seems village, as uh we, many of us have heard the same. Uh and I want to again give kudos and the standing always, and the people from the Northwest Learning Lab stand up and give a wave to the audience. So that they can see all the great things that you all are doing. Also, um I know they have more information on how you can support um our students as it goes into the fall year. So thank you all again for putting on such an amazing program in such a short period of time. The previous or the other sites that have existed before, they had a whole year to plan. And Gary had five months, and they pulled it together and they rocked it. And I know our families are so thankful to you all, and we are as well, and we look forward to partnering with you again. Thank you so much, board.
All right, next, we have public comment. The Gary Community School Corporation Board trustees love these comments from the community. As a result, the agenda for each regular meeting lasts time for public expression. The period of public expression is in the midst of three minutes per individual. And, I'm sorry, in thirty minutes total discussion of items on the agenda or to express concerns relative to operational disputes, school board actions, and other items of general educational interest. If there are many people wishing to address the board, we may limit the amount of time that a person will be scheduled. Comments should be directed to the board, at any of the board members. Statements should not be conducive or affirmative. Persons making comments should not be statements made by other persons. They should not be commensurate or already present or discuss complaints against individual employees of the Gary Community School Corporation at any board or school trustees meetings. Issues related to personnel, individual circumstances, or an individual school will be referred to the building principal upon appropriate administrative and attempt to resolve the issue prior to the field of court. The speaker cannot transfer any remaining time to another person. The board president will enforce their rules and may take actions necessary to maintain order at the meeting. Such actions may include, but are not limited to interrupting the speaker if the statement is too undoable, repetitive, or otherwise libelous. The president may terminate the address of any speaker for libelous reasons. And then, the total time, total amount of time devoted to public comments if there is a large number of people wishing to address the board, or if there is a large agenda of other bases before the board. Thank you. So at this time, we have.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, at this time, we have Sandra Mosley.
She's got the one.
Oh, okay.
No, not me.
It kind of like hair, so, no, okay. Bruce Curry.
Hello, thank you, I'm just glad to be here, board and the community, uh this is great. Uh we started this summer, we're about, probably, let's say, a couple of months before school starts. Been good things, I wanna thank what I saw with the Urban League, outstanding, doing these positive things in the community, and we're with you on that. Uh this summer, we took about five students to a national uh convention, uh NAACP. One of our students in this area won the Bronze Award for contemporary classic music uh out of almost four thousand students. So told me something, everybody was talking about Gary, Indiana. And we're on the map, we're on the map, uh President Biden was there, there was other dignitaries uh at this particular meeting, but our Gary students, that was in this area represented well. So what my point today is, we gotta continue positivity and continue the collaboration and communication, be very open. And if there's some conflict, we need to talk to the superintendent, talk to the board members. But let's make these meetings that we wanna get parents working closely with the students. Reading, doing math, doing like that summer program, we gotta continue it on, can't just stop. So where I'm at right now is, let's have a great year, and that's all I wanted to make. Thank you.
Mary Ann Canty-Redus.
Good evening, Superintendent Stokes, uh Mrs. O'Brien's board member and audience, I'm Mary Ann Canty-Redus. Last week, I made a statement that, that we didn't have any libraries open, I'm gonna have to be corrected. There are two of our schools that do have a librarian in there, but the rest of them do not. And I suggested that we talk to Indiana University, Purdue University, or Kama with the other ladies and men who are working on education, and they can come in and house our libraries that are not open Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, so that our children will be able to come in and get them some books. I also wanted to make a point about last week. Uh the superintendent told us who the corporate treasurer was and the deputy treasurer. But in three, four, three, five, three, six, and three, seven, there were some appointments of the board. And he didn't give us the names, and I thought maybe this board would be able to watch pass him with us and let us know who the legislative liaison is, who the policy liaison is, who the representative to the policy committee is, and the representative to the strategic planning committee is. I think we should know that, as an audience, and as people who come to board member meetings, and we want to be transparent, so let us know who those people are. Also, I still want to say something to you about my parents, not my parents, but parents in the whole city of Gary. Forty dollars an hour, they can go to McDonald's and make eighteen. But anyway, they do a lot of work, they're very well with the teachers in the classroom, they need to be recognized. I know they have uh other pop rocks that they get, but two percent raises, that really not enough. Another thing, this board meeting is only on Facebook. A lot of seniors don't have Facebook. Is it possible we can get on the educational channel of Comcast or the legislative channel of Comcast, so they can, they can see the board meetings? Thank you.
All right, Mr. Robert Bug.
Evening, board, my name is Robert Bug, and I just want to say very briefly that if you're gonna have leadership, it's to start at the top. The last board meeting was, uh on major agenda says, this is not considered a public meeting, but then you have on here approval for the minutes of a regular meeting. You violated the open door law. Now, I don't know why they changed it to Wednesday, because a lot of people used to board meeting being on a Tuesday. But I'll get back to that later. I want to let the board know, this is not for Dr. Stokes, he wasn't here. That young man who came before you, Anthony, crying because of what Westside School did to him, he called me last night, he said that he did not care what happened to him because.
Mr. Bug.
What you, wait a minute, wait a minute, you didn't say anything about when the teacher was getting, putting out this public, getting the background, remembering that for this move.
No, Mr. Bug.
So if you're gonna be, if you're gonna be concerned.
Mr. Bug, so I'm gonna ask you not to, not to discuss, we can discuss it afterward, but not right now.
We, we did discuss it, I gave it to uh Dr. Malau, and I told you folks that nothing, this young man about there, he gave up.
We are not going to be discussing this too.
The other thing, the school that you said that we couldn't only speak about things on the agenda, that is not what the law said. The law says, anybody that the Gary Community School Corporation have under their purview, that you can speak on it, because this is the only avenue that the public has a chance to speak on at a public board meeting. So you can't dictate to the people what to say, but not to say.
I'm not dictating what to say, but not to say.
But you said that to speak to the student, if it's got to do with school and students, then I should be able to, for what they concern.
But you're actually.
The other thing, the other thing is, I notice that uh you all meet twice a month. Now, I just want the public to know that the prior so-called advisory board, which was elected, the law says that they are entitled to uh per diem and the two thousand dollars annual salary. We didn't receive anything, we attend board meetings at our own expense. But if you all come in, meet twice a month, just per diem, and two thousand dollars, and it's in the law, it's not your fault. It's not your fault, it's definitely not have to do it. Not only everybody to pray for Sonia Massey, most of y'all know who she is and what happened to her. It's almost what's happened to the student she didn't give, but it's not Dr. Stokes, you were not in charge, but the people that were in charge, I told them about this young man, and nobody even reached out to him. Nobody even cared.
Mr. Bug.
When he said he don't care about whatever, if anything happened to him, it would be on the law, not to Dr. Stokes.
That's it, I'm, we done.
Who done, I got ten more seconds.
You're, you're done.
No, I don't think so. I'm, I'm, you could say I'm being diligent of what, but it's time to speak out, to speak out.
Good afternoon, everyone. I have a couple, several concerns. You have indicated that this meeting is being held from five to six. I think that's too short of an amount of time to consider the work that we have to do. You've had your meeting scheduled for Wednesday, a lot of your members of the community attend prayer meetings on Wednesday. That poses an inconvenience to a number of residents. During the last meeting, or following the last meeting, I was told that DUAB had been approached by our corporation and that a loan was given to our school corporation by DUAB. My question is, what was the amount, what was the purpose? And why would we go to DUAB to request monies of all entities? Why would we go to DUAB? I want to know what you're providing for those students who I understand have been called recently and told that though they marched across the stage with their cap and gown on, that they did not meet the requirements for graduating and that they should return and attend another year of school. Please explain what's going on. Why would allow our students to think they graduated from school and then to be told that they have not? We need to do better. I want to remind parents, members of our community, that the Gary Community School Corporation parents, whether you are sub, surrogate, foster, adoptive, teen, step grand, great grand, fill in, or otherwise, we are to re- remember that all parents and concerned citizens of our school corporation are to protect and practice their right to show up, stand up, and speak up at school, at school board meetings regarding their children, their children's education, the education and day-to-day experiences of all who attend our Gary Community School Corporation schools. The school board, including the school superintendent, is expected to maximize, not minimize parental involvement in school board meetings and in our schools and classrooms. We want you to make a concerted effort to provide to every student the highest quality and the most equitable education, which is comparable to Gary's high-scoring neighboring K through twelve schools. Thank you so much.
I'm gonna now move on to consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, items five point one through five point six.
Let's hear it, Seth. Shantre Irving on the second half. All in favor, I oppose our motion here. At this time, we're gonna turn it over to Dr. Stokes to recognize district leadership.
All right, so we have three staff members that we have offered positions to, and now they've been board approved. So we wanna have Ms. Chelsea Lynton, if you can come up and say a little bit about our now employees.
Good evening, board, Dr. Stokes, and our wonderful community. It is my pleasure to introduce to the community for the first time three new members of our cabinet, our administrative team. We are gonna start with Mr. Hank Kylender as our newly appointed athletic director. A little bit about our friend Hank. Hank joined Gary Community School Corporation in December of twenty twenty as the district's athletic coordinator. He came to Gary from Merrillville High School. In the past four years, he has been a major part of the Westside Leadership Academy's academic department, athletic department, that saw major upgrades in facilities, a new conference affiliation, a rebranding of the district elementary and middle schools, the startup of a unified sports program at Westside, and the reboot of both baseball and softball. Kylender brings extensive experience as a coach and educator in Northwest Indiana. Prior to Merrillville, Kylender worked as an assistant coach at East Chicago Central in football, basketball, baseball, golf, athletic school high schools. He earned his bachelor's degree with honors from Calumet College. Please, another round of applause for our athletic director, Hank Kylender. And now, we're gonna pass the mic over to Hank, and he's gonna give a few words remarks.
Okay, I'd like to thank everybody for uh making this a reality, Dr. Stokes, the board, the administration at all the schools here in Gary. Uh the community has been outstanding these last four years, and I feel like it's a real home to me, and I'm very excited for this new opportunity. I'll be forever grateful, Mr. Robert Lee, our outgoing athletic director.
We'll see you.
You know, we wish him just outstanding success in the future down at Richmond High School. He has taught me more than I can ever uh say thank you for. Um in this position, I look forward to building off the positive momentum that we have. Uh I think we've really built a great culture uh in the Gary Community Schools for Athletics. Uh you look at the facilities we brought in, they are great, but they're not gonna keep kids here. We know that kids are going to look for schools. So I'm a big believer in bringing in quality human beings. Uh they don't have to be a teacher, but they have to be an educator. You have to be able to teach your kids life skills. Uh I'm a big proponent of, people ask me, how was your team this year? Well, they're only ten years, with their husbands, and their wives, and their community members, on how they do in their community. And I'm a big believer in that. If we're not setting our students up for success, we're failing. So wrapping up, I said, let's all continue to work together. I'm very excited about this opportunity, the new school board, and let's make our students Gary ready.
I love it. So our next new team member, I, I spent the evening doing my homework on pronouncing your name, so let me know what my grade is after the meeting. I would like to introduce to you our new human resources director, Yovanka Sipkovich. Thank you so much, also known as Joe, so we're gonna go there now. Joe boasts a combination of training and experiences within and outside of the field of education. Her experience in sales and training are also contributing factors to her success as a teacher, administrator, entrepreneur, and human resources practitioner. She has extensive experience with personnel and legal matters involving tort claims, special education complaints, mediations, and due process hearings, as well as organized labor laws and processes. She has spearheaded the organization of job fairs in multiple districts to support the hiring of all personnel, including hard-to-fill positions. Yovanka has worked in the Dublin and East Chicago schools and comes to us from the Hammond schools, most recently as the executive director of Exceptional Learners. She's a native of Northwest Indiana and holds a bachelor's degree in political science from Purdue Northwest, a master's degree in special education from Indiana University Northwest, and a master's degree in leadership from Western Governors University. Please, give a round of applause for our new human resources director, Yovanka Sipkovich.
Thank you for that lovely introduction, and you did a great job of pronouncing my name. Thank you to the esteemed board members, thank you to Dr. Stokes, thank you to the entire Gary community and stakeholders that support all of the students here. I am so looking forward to supporting a district initiative rooted in equitable practices. My mission in education has been in equitable practices. My mission in education has been in equitable practices in learning, in supporting our human capital, in making sure that all students, all personnel, can come to work, can come to school, and feel welcome, learn, and feel appreciated. I think it's also super important for me to thank my family, who's come here with me today. My husband Greg is in the audience. I also have my daughter Gia and my son George. Dr. Stokes knows me kind of well. I'm a talker. She told me I had to keep it kind of brief. So, and my husband often says I would talk to a man again. So I'd like to just end it with saying that I am excited to take the initiatives that I've come to learn as being the most important part of being in a school district. Again, that comes in equitable practices, and the most, my short-term goals are staffing. I know that students are the most affected by the individuals who are directly in front of them teaching every day, whether it's in a classroom, in a gymnasium, on a field, in the cafeteria, or in our halls. What we do in offices only supports the number-one priority, which again is the teaching and learning and supporting the students. So making sure that that short-term goal of having staff that is highly qualified for our students is number one. And then number two, a long-range goal, to make sure that there's some longevity with the people who we get in front of our students, so that we have some consistency, and that's where we're going to get that growth. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And last, but certainly not least, I'd like to extend a warm and hearty welcome to our new chief operating officer, COO, Dieta Wright. Dieta Wright is a proud native of the region with more than thirty-five years of educational leadership experience. Her vast career in public education includes thirty-two years in the East Chicago schools, serving as superintendent, middle school and high school principals, and science teacher. After a brief, brief retirement in 2021, Wright served in a curriculum and instruction role in Chicago. And for the past two years, she has served as an administrator in the Merrillville Community School Corporation. Wright earned her Bachelor of Science in Education and a Master's in Education from Indiana University Northwest. In addition, she earned thirty additional graduate credits beyond a master's degree from various universities, completing diverse course selections. In 2019, Wright earned an EDS from Indiana Wesleyan University. Meet our COO, Dieta Wright.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you, Board, and Dr. Stokes, for this great opportunity. Being a, being a student here in Gary, Indiana, brings me back home. Being an administrator in East Chicago and Merrillville, I've been an educator here in the area all my life, except for one year. So I know the area, I know the students, I'm aware of the parents. I know our students. I'm so looking forward to this opportunity to be a part of this new journey alongside Dr. Stokes and the new administrative team. I know that we have hard work to do, and I'm more than willing to pull up my sleeves to do whatever it takes. Whatever it takes to move this district forward, whatever it takes to make sure that our students get exactly what they need. I am committed to Gary School Corporation to make sure that everyone succeeds. So again, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. And I just want you all to watch and see the progress that we're going to make here in Gary School Corporation.
So if I understand correctly, two of you have roots in Gary. Yovanka, your family, your parents were from Gary?
I am who I am because of Gary, Indiana. My father immigrated here from the former Yugoslavia for a job after World War II. My mother is Russian, and they met, and I am who I am because of Gary. I was born at 232 Ridge Road, and my mom graduated from Tolleson High School. Tolleson, Strong, and my sister went to Lou Wallace. So she was a hardened, and my mom was a raider. We did move when I was young, so I did not have the opportunity to go to the Gary schools. However, my grandmother lived here until she passed away. Both my mother and my grandmother are laid to rest here in Gary, so I come back often to pay my respects to them. But I, again, am who I am because of Gary, Indiana.
Thank you, Dr. Stokes and Board, for this opportunity. We do want to remind you that there are still a few positions listed on the website for application as we seek to complete all roles on our cabinet. And we'd like to also remind everybody that we are broadcasting live right now on WGBE eighty-eight point seven FM. And this also will live on YouTube and will be turned over to the city of Gary for broadcast on cable channel four. Thanks, everybody.
Action now. Six point one, approval of full-service removal of Sedexo management. Six point two, approval for donation given by Gary Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Six point three, appointment of school board committees. At this time, I would like to approve the approval of full-service removal of Sedexo management. Roll call vote. Dr. Janita Johnson Woods?
Yes.
Attorney Shantre Irving, I say yes. Mr. Jake Glenn Johnson?
Yes.
All right. With that being three to zero, that motion will pass.
Yeah.
So I would like to make a motion to approve the donation given by Gary Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta.
I would second that. Are any questions or comments? Roll call vote. Dr. Johnson Woods?
Yes.
Attorney Shantre Irving, I say yes. Mr. Glenn Johnson?
Yes.
With the vote three to zero, motion care. And for the appointment of the school board committee, we want to appoint Dr. Janita Johnson Woods to the policy committee. Do I have a second? I have second now. Roll call vote. Dr. Johnson Woods? Mr. Glenn Johnson?
Yes.
And Shantre Irving, yes. With a vote of three to zero, motion care. Congratulations, Dr. Woods. Information items of Gary Communities, Gary Community School Corporation, community and student code of conduct. Ms. Dixon?
Good evening, Gary School Board, Dr. Stokes, and all of the community members. My name is Ferguson Dixon, and I'm the Director of Student Services. This afternoon, I've been charged with the task of reporting on the draft form of our community handbook and student code of conduct. The final document will be presented to you, Board, for your consideration for approval during one of your upcoming board meetings. If we notice, the handbook is referred to as the community handbook and student code of conduct. This is because we, as a school corporation, want our community stakeholders, as well as our students, to be well informed of all its contents. The purpose of our community handbook and student code of conduct is to empower our community stakeholders and students and parents on all aspects of our delivery of service to all of our students and our families to meet the overarching goal or main purpose, which is teaching and learning. If you look at, to your right, the slide above, there's a copy of the table of contents. You'll see various divisions and subdivisions, which include quick references, like your bell schedule, things that you need to get quickly, parents especially, enrollment, academic resources, health and wellness, family expectations, and student code of conduct and safety protocols. This handbook is vastly detailed, and it is very long in its nature and length. And for that reason, this evening, I want, I want to offer and hit key points of reference, which include very important things and legislation, policies that changed recently and have become, have come into effect as of July first, twenty twenty-four. The areas I want to offer to you some supplementary insight are the cell phone policy and the attendance policy. I hear the, 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 the support in the background. These are default policies, and they're buzzing right now. I'll start with the new changes with the cell phone policy. According to Indiana Code twenty dash twenty-six dash five dash forty point seven, which was added under Senate Bill one eighty-five, the use of wireless communication devices, including cell phones, during instructional time is prohibited without the permission of the teacher. Exceptions will be granted for instructional reasons, and that's at the discretion of the teacher, for matters of students' health and for emergencies. And school administration will take those items in those situations. The new legislation offers a clear opportunity to our students and our teachers to focus on what's most important, and that's the factor, one of the factors of academic success, which is time spent on instruction without minimum classroom distractions. Next, I'm going to speak to you about the legislation that covers attendance in schools. Well, the state of Indiana, IC Code twenty dash thirty-three dash two, Chapter Two, covers compulsory school attendance. Students' attendance is extremely important and the responsibility of the parent, the student, and the community, the school corporation. Research shows, of course, students that come to school daily and are in attendance are the most successful and achieve more. Chapter two of the Indiana Code describes the legal obligations of GCSE to ensure that students attend school regularly. New legislation specifically, added to our current attendance policy as of July one, under the Senate Enroll Act of two eighty-two, requires schools to meet with parents of chronically absent students or students who missed five days of school within a ten-week period without a qualifying excuse. And that's in grades K through six. And we must establish as a district an improvement plan for the students' attendance. This is yet another opportunity for us to intervene, because it's all about intervention, and help our GCSE families prior to students' reporting chronically or showing up as chronically absent or having those ten days of or more unexcused absences. And this will eliminate parents, and this is what I hope, and my hope as director is, to eliminate them from facing consequences or any legal involvement against students' parents. An exciting new service that we've added from the Department of Student Services is that we're going to have an attendance hotline. This year, students will be able to report their students' office. Actually, a twenty-four-hour hotline. But we ask that they report their absence to this number, and this number has not gone live, but it is two one nine eight eight one five five three eight. And when the parents call, they'll be prompted which school by pushing the buttons, just like other artificial intelligence that you use. And the parents can give a reason for absence, the school, the teacher, and this is going to help us do two things. Keep accurate attendance records. Data is very important, even in attendance. And this will also help our schools to monitor, and my department to monitor, this attendance. The hotline is set to go live with the start of school on August eleventh, twenty twenty-four. We're very excited about that. And in short, we want to help our families, not give them consequences, to not experience consequences, and instead, we ultimately want students to return to school, come daily where teaching and learning happens in GCSE. Do you have any other questions for me, Board? Thank you.
So far, under Master of Report Young, please discuss some financial information. Steve and Daniel Dalton?
Thank you, Board. My name is Steve Dalton, and I work with Senator Dalton. And we are your financial advisors until you throw us out of here. And as you may all know, the, no, my son, Daniel, who's sitting in the back, who has hair, who is younger, who's more fit. He attended Purdue University, ran the cross-country team, is a graduate of Purdue University, and is happy to be so. And he works for me in a financial advisor capacity. He's really your day-to-day financial advisor. I'm here to show off and to tell you how great a job you've done over the last seven years and give you a financial highlight reels that will begin to tell the timeline story for the next four months, and then you'll see Daniel a whole lot more, okay? And he'll be, he'll be a lot more brief. Yes, I heard the story that we need to be brief as well. One thing, our involvement should never be misconstrued as replacing a professional and expert-level CFO. And we are very supportive of you hiring a CFO here for Gary's community schools. And if that CFO decides to keep us around, it's fine. But if they don't, if many CFOs don't need somebody like us, that's fine, too. We're here for you to have the person you need to have in the, in the seat for the day-to-day operations. Here's the next four months. The next four months are tonight, a really high level, and then I'm going to get away. And then, next month, an update to the five-year projection that we've been producing for the state for the last five years, so that you can see exactly what they were looking at for the next five years, not just the next year. The following month, in September, a preview, a public hearing preview of the proposed budget for two thousand twenty-five, so that you can see that the projection involves what we're actually proposing that you spend in two thousand twenty-five. And I say we, it's not me, it's, it's your administration that will be producing this budget. And then in October, it's your job to approve as a board that budget for two thousand twenty-five, so that you have money to spend come January first. No money can be spent unless you guys approve those appropriations on that. At October, was it ninth issue, that, that supplement say? Okay. I have a button here, don't I? Okay. Some good news. It may look like bad news, because if you look across the top row, it looks like the number went down to forty-two percent, and that would seem like a disaster. But two thousand twenty-four, we're only halfway. And so in June, we got half of our property taxes. We'll get the other half in December, and that tells me that we're on or exceeding our property tax collections for the last four years. That's good news, because when we get extremely high property tax collections, those revenues flow into your property tax funds. Tax rates is another good news, good news, have been going down. Tax rates going down is good for you, because then there's less circuit breaker impact on this school corporation. Less circuit breaker means you collect more in each of those levies, because we would like to get a hundred percent of levy. We can get a hundred percent of levy, because people are being protected, which is great, at one percent of their house, or two percent of their rental, or three percent of their business. And the reason tax rates are going down is because assessed values are going up. That's a good thing for Gary. Whether you're the school corporation, or the city, or the township, whatever entity you are in Gary, assessed value is going up is a good thing, because it will press down tax rates. You know who it's not a good thing for? If your house is worth more today, you pay more taxes. I understand that entirely, because that two-point-one billion dollars includes a whole bunch of people's homes and rentals and businesses that are probably worth more today, and they'd rather not pay more taxes. I understand that. Cash balances have been increasing. Now, this is one of those Excel spreadsheet-type things, we have to stare at it a little bit. Each of the boxes across the top is a year. Each of the rows across the side is a, is a fund. Education Fund is the fund that the state pays to us, and they pay to us based on the number of students that are enrolled in Gary Community Schools. That fund has been growing in cash balance over the last five years. Debt service, we don't want to get too crazy about debt service, but I think some of you will remember that the state postponed some debt service payments so that you could put... so that you could put, it was called ten sixty-fives, you could put a bunch of money into buildings and facilities. So the debt service cash balance will always ride in that million-dollar category. It's not going to go up because they're only going to give you so much to make your debt service payments. They're not going to give you more. Operating Referendum, you know that you voted, many of you voted for the Operating Referendum, and we will probably be recommending that you do it again when it comes up at the end of the seven-year period of time. That Operating Referendum holds at about three million dollars because that referendum money is pushed to the Education Fund and to the Operations Fund to support the operations annually of this corporation. The Operations Fund itself used to be as much as eight million dollars in the hole. That was bad news. Today, we're positive, as I said, Daniel just ran numbers for me, we're actually more positive on June thirtieth, let's see if that number was, five-point-seven million dollars on June thirtieth in the Operation. Total them all up, twenty-three million at the end of last year. That was probably the big number that hit the newspaper, "Wah-ah, Gary Schools has twenty-three million dollars in cash." My recommendation is let's not spend it right now. Let's not spend it on the first day, but let's spend it wisely over the next few years on hiring the right people, educating, doing the, the things that are important at that table and not taking the finance guy quite as serious as the important people over there. This is a budget versus actual. It's hard to see, so I'll probably have to summarize it for you. I'll tell you that this is the first six months of this year in your big funds.
You got a, you got a pointer. You can use your little pointer to...
Oh. How do I do that? You take your finger off of it, maybe?
Stop hiding yourself.
Ah, I was moving too fast. Okay, so the Education Fund, the budget was forty million dollars this year. We have spent twenty-one million of it through the end of June. The Referendum Fund, the budget was ten-point-two million dollars. We have spent four-point-two million dollars of it through the end of June. Don't take that too seriously because that just means we have more transfers to make out of that fund into the other funds. Operations Fund, a budget of nineteen million. We spent thirteen million. This is the one I'm concerned about because it's spending a little bit heavier than budget. I think it's because we changed some things, some contracts, some transportation, some things that are taking place that we're going to take a closer look at. But that's the budget I'm watching most closely as we go into the next budget season. Another good piece of news, you may remember that in early last year, September or October, wherever they do the count of students, we increased for the first time in a bit to just over four thousand students. The more students, the more the state sends us, the more money it sends us. So the more people that we can get, more kids, that people, the more kids you can get to show up to schools this year in the role, the better for the school corporation because then we can make use of those dollars. I think it's in the range of nine thousand dollars per student that's sent to us by the state to educate those students. I think that was it for me. Questions for the board? One question for the board. Are there other things that you want to see besides an update to the fire projection next month, the budget the following month? Other things you'd like to see right away? We're just going to throw it all out to you.
I think you provided us with the information that we need, but we know based upon our relationship, if there's something more, we can always reach out.
Love it. Okay, thank you all.
Will the information be a financial statement that shows us kind of where we're tracking?
It will. So each month, a five-year projection financial statement, if you will, is updated with the actual cash that's been spent that month, and we can provide that to the board and to the public every month.
So the good we cash as, as well as the system balance?
It will. And all of our books are cash-based. They are not accrual-based. So those of you that are accounting types, this is cash in, cash out. Thank you, thank you.
All right, moving on to board reports and communications. Are there any individual board member reports or communications?
The only thing I want to say is how much I appreciate everybody being here tonight. We know this school will be starting in just a few weeks, and so we're all excited about that. In addition, I'm very excited about our new members of our team. We know that we'll have a great academic year, and we're all in for a greater here at the school corporation.
Diddle, welcome.
Well, I, I want to take time to thank Dr. Black and, in her absence, Dr. McLeod for the summer program. Those numbers looked very good, and I hope it translates into the school year as well. And, and again, I want to thank all your teachers that worked with you over the summer. And welcome to our new employees. Look forward to meeting you all and working with you.
All right, next we have Superintendent Report. Dr. Stokes.
All right, thank you so much. I'm going to have just about three different topics that I want to talk about. I believe the first that I want to talk about has to do with iLearn. And I'm going to read some information directly from the Indiana Department of Education. On their website, iLearn stands for the Indiana Learning Evaluation and Assessment Readiness Network. So what is that? Basically, it's the Summit of Accountability Assessment for Indiana students in grades three through eight. So three through eighth grade, and then, of course, our high school biology. iLearn basically measures student achievement and growth. That's achievement and growth, and those words are going to be important here in a minute. But according to the Indiana Academic Standards, based on English Language Arts and for mathematics, and that's for students, of course, in grades three through eight. However, we measure science for grades four and six, and we also measure social studies for grades five. I also will have Ms. Vegas share some information about what we call SAT. If you recall, SAT used to be an assessment that we provided any student who was interested in going to college. But state code changed, code, Indiana Code twenty dash thirty-two dash five-point-one dash seven D. And if you wonder why we give you code, we give you that so that if you want to go research it, you can do it. I believe in giving you the why behind things that happen, and you can go and look at it for yourself if you need to. But basically, Indiana uses college boards' SAT to fulfill requirements based on that code for school accountability. And what's different about that is that all of our students, who we call juniors or students in grade eleven, they have to take that assessment, and it's an assessment that talks about mathematics, reading and writing, and it assesses standards in grade eleven. So it replaced what used to be known as I-Step, beginning in the year twenty-one, twenty-two. So I'm going to talk a little bit about iLearn first. So what are we looking at here? If you look, you will see that we have the Indiana Department of Ed. So it says the state is in orange, and then Gary Community Schools Corporation is in blue. This is for grades three through eight, English Language Arts. And what I want you to see is you have years here rolling down the bottom. So if you see twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four. What I want to hone on in is that in the state of Indiana, forty-one percent of our students across the state in grades three through eight are showing proficiency in English Language Arts. Now, that doesn't speak necessarily to the fact that students are growing because students are definitely growing. But proficiency means that they're mastering the learning targets and standards at a particular grade level. So we have forty-one percent proficiency for the state. And Gary, and I like to say this upfront, I talked about being transparent. We are where we are. We are at just under ten percent proficiency. It doesn't mean that our students aren't growing, but we're at just under ten percent proficiency. Are we where we want to be? We're not where we want to be. We are going to have to do a deep dive to find out why our students are not performing where we believe they can and should be performing. And as I've often said, it's going to take you, me, it's going to take all of us to make sure that we work with our students so that we can get our proficiency rates up. I've switched now to math, and of course, it's the same grade level, three through eight, and the same years. This is the state. As you see, in 2024, the state has forty-point-seven percent of our students who are proficient. And as you see, in Gary Community Schools, we got five-point-one percent of our students who are proficient. Again, we see that there's some growth because you see the proficiency rate went from three-point-eight-one to five-point-one. And I would be remiss if I didn't say we have to figure out why our students are not performing where we believe they can be and should be performing. With that being said, we just want to be honest and transparent about where we are. But this data sets our baseline for where we need to move forward. You know, we can't do anything about the past, but we know that we need to move forward. We want this trend to be going up and not just, you know, across. It is going up a little bit, but we want it to go up a little bit more. So I'm going to give another look at this data. And I want you to see that here we have the year. So the colors represent the year. This kind of, I don't know, charcoal kind of gray-looking color is twenty twenty-four. This is a look based on the school. So you've got Badger, Beverage, McCullough, Glen Park, Williams, Bailey, and Gary Middle. And I'm going to close my mouth for about thirty seconds and just allow you time to just look. We'll have this put on our website, so if you can't see, we'll get it put on our website so that you'll be able to look at it. And for anyone who wants it, I can always give you a hard copy of it. So I think I closed my mouth for thirty seconds. With that being said, you know, like I tell everybody, the facts are what they are. Data is what it is. We're not trying to criticize anyone, but we do know that our students can do better. And so with that being said, I just want you to see this snapshot of where we are. This is our baseline, and we plan to go forward upward. You get the same thing in math. So I'll be quiet here for a moment. So this is the information that deals with iLearn. When the IREAD, you've heard a lot about IREAD, which is the third grade assessment. The, the results are embargoed. Embargo basically means that we can't share them yet. There's still what I call washing and cleansing the data. So once that data is not embargoed anymore, we will be able to share with you. With that being said, I'm going to turn it over to this, now, Cindy, you want the clicker or are we good?
I think it's just this one slide, so it should be good. Thank you, Dr. Stokes, and hello, members of the board. I'll speak very briefly about SAT data. As Dr. Stokes shared when she did her introduction, the SAT, we all know, is the college entrance exam. And prior to 2021, it was available for Indiana students to take it no cost if they wanted to pursue the college and career pathway. In twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, it became required for all students. We started collecting that data for accountability as a state in twenty-two, twenty-three. So that's why you see that there are only two years' worth of data. So this is a relatively new assessment for our, for all of our students to be taking and for our teachers to be working to prepare students for. You'll see here that we held fairly steady from 2023 to 2024 in both reading and writing and math. You can see this EBRW acronym stands for Evidence-Based Reading and Writing, and that's the sort of ELA portion of the SAT, and then the Mathematics SAT. Individual students get two score reports on the SAT, both the traditional SAT report that's sent to colleges, and then the state of Indiana also sets a benchmark, which is what we're showing here, how many, what percentage of our students hit that benchmark. You'll see we have both Gary Virtual Academy and Westside Leadership Academy here. We did have just enough students in Gary Virtual this year. Once, when it's below ten students, we don't report out on that data, which was the case in the elementary, but we have more than ten. In an effort to respect student privacy, we do report out. So you can see, we did have a handful of students at Gary Virtual take it, some pass the EBRW portion in 2023, but not in 2024. I'll, I'll just echo in closing, Dr. Stokes, in saying that we know our high school students can do better than this. And there's, you know, a lot of work to come to see what exactly is happening that's leading to students missing the mark, and where can we really push them and start to build those skills so that next year, the data looks a little stronger.
Thank you. If you recall, I promised that I would give a staffing update, and I believe that this is timely considering the fact that school will be starting just next month. But I want to keep the board and community informed about these opportunities, and we're always constantly giving a shout-out of you see yourself supporting our students, and if you have the credentials and the skills, and more importantly, the love for our children, and you want to apply for a position, we're happy to help you understand where you can go online to apply. With that being said, I just want to talk a little bit about what's going on at our building level. As you see, we've got these positions open, the Behavior Specialists. We have twenty-two teaching positions. That's a little more than I would want at this time of the year. But with that being said, we're still interviewing. We still have recommendations being made. But we have twenty-two teaching positions open at our building level. We've got three specialized support positions, as you see, secretaries, substitutes, things of that nature. Five paraprofessionals and the paraprofessionals. We had a speaker talk about them and how important they are earlier. Our paraprofessionals work alongside our teachers to support our students. We have four lunch aides slash recess aides. And then at the district level, we still have three administrative positions open. Thank goodness, we have three new folks coming on board, but we still have three positions open. We've got one autism specialist position open. Five specialized support positions there again, like your secretary, electricians, plumber, and maintenance. So my shout-out to you is that we make sure that we show up and help out in areas that are needed, and just understand, be patient with us. As we get the year started, we will be trying to fill these positions. And last but not least, I always like to give you a draft of a potential future agenda. And understand that this is just a draft because as the year goes on, we often get things that we may have to add to a board meeting and we discuss that with our board president at any time about what the board's will is for what they want. So don't understand, this isn't our meeting. This is the board's meeting. It's not my meeting. But we do the will of the board. And so with that being said, I want to share a few things. Our Gary Ready snapshot will be about the STEM cap recap, and that, that's really good. You'll want to see that. We will also have some information that we bring for action. And you heard about the Gary Community Schools Code of Conduct, the, the communities and student code of conduct, so we will bring that back for action. We will also have some information about a self-tower opportunity. So our technology department will talk to us about that. And everything else, from what I can see here, not that it won't change, is pretty much just kind of regular board information. So with that, I'm going to give it back over to our board president.
Thank you, Dr. Stokes. All right, so what that next item is adjournment. Have a motion to adjourn. And that says that. I'm in favor. Motion care, convene as adjourn.